It is 7:01 and we hereby call the December Board meeting of the Villages Tivoli Board of Trustees to order. Would you please rise for the pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming out.
I'm going to make a request.
Yes.
Can everybody move a little bit?
Oh, geez.
And I don't want to...
Absolutely.
Thank you.
That'd not be good. Although we could send it in and probably win $100,000, but we don't want to do that.
I think everybody sucked it.
We have a lot on the agenda, mostly housekeeping. And then after we get through the agenda items, Tim Wiedemann from Rondau Consulting will be here to address the board, as well as those of you gathered, to discuss where the shared services study is thus far. This is a part of a grant that the Villages Tivoli received in concert with the Town of Red Hook and the Village of Red Hook from the Dutchess County Department of Planning. It is a $79,500 grant award that we received to do a consolidation study as to whether or not it would be feasible to consolidate the highway departments with regards to the three municipalities. Trustee Schneider is a liaison for this study, and we've been meeting close to a year, I think, at this point. And we just left the shared services meeting, and Tim will be presenting to the board and to all of you tonight. I just want to again reiterate that this is simply will be a recommendation from the consultants, and the recommendation will be made to the committee, and it will be up to the three boards to decide whether or not to accept the consultants' recommendation. There's nothing set in stone. There's no decision that has been made yet. And again, this will be a recommendation made from the consultants to the municipalities, and we will decide from there. That being said, the agendas have been made available. At this point, I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules to allow the public to address the board on agenda items only. Motion's been made by trustee Schneider. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. It's mostly housekeeping. I wonder if anyone has any comments on agenda items? Seeing none, a motion to return to regular business?
So moved.
Motion's been made by trustee Bruno. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. A clerk's report. Clerk Gennella?
The clerk's office sold 497 trash bags. We completed two payrolls, and it was attended by a planning board workshop and a ZBA meeting. We also have two holidays coming up. Thursday and Friday will be closed for the Christmas holiday, and Thursday and Friday, January 1st and 2nd premieres.
Right. And we'll be closing December 24th at noon, and the office room will be closed until the 20th. I believe we're following Town Red Hook's schedule as well, if I'm not mistaken. Thank you. Schedule of upcoming events. I don't think there's anything that we need to be aware of for tonight's meeting. Treasurer's report?
In the general fund, there was $28,929.18. The water fund was $3,612.45. The general fund was $1,938.17, for a total of $34,479.80. And we added a trial balance to the treasurers' report.
With that information, at this point, entertain a motion to accept the treasurers' report?
So moved.
Motion's been made by the deputy mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You've had an opportunity to review the vouchers and the booklets for this month. At this point, entertain a motion to pay the bills for the month of December.
So moved.
Motion's been made by the deputy mayor, and seconded very quickly by trustee Schneider. Is there any discussion on any of the bills this month? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. At this point, I would turn the floor over to trustee Israedi for the purpose of his zoning report. Trustee Israedi?
I think it should be a little more fulsome in my report this month, and give you a year-to-date report. The zoning officer for the period through November 30th, I believe this reporting us, has issued 27 building permits and closed 29. He has done 25 title searches, which involves looking to see if there are any records of liens or failures to close out certificates of occupancy or building permits. And 10 fire inspections. The fees that were collected on that added up to approximately, well, $4,395. In addition to that, he has issued 20 code violations and resolved 16 of those. Sorry. Actually, I think it's 17 now, because there was one gravity that wasn't done at the time of this report. Two of those issues, one of those issues is now, well, two issues are pending. One has gone before the court, and we're pending the action of the court. And two of them are unresolved, and they are... The next step will probably be to send them to court.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on, I don't believe there's any correspondence this month that the board needs to be aware of. Okay. Moving on to regular business, the first item that you want to talk about was the snowstorm that occurred the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. It hit the village pretty hard. We lost a large tree on Woods Road right in front of the condos that brought down wires. That section, pretty much from Woods Road to Elizabeth, and up Woods Road and over to Sangstack, was without power. Most of those homes were without power until Saturday. That night and throughout the days up until Saturday, we were doing conference calls with Central Hudson. We did lose power at one of our main wells, as well as the sewer plant. But there was no concern with any malfunctions of any of the equipment. We were able to rely on our DPW's expertise to make sure that they were still running. Surely, there were no health concerns with regards to the sewer plant being down. But we want to thank Central Hudson and to thank our DPW for the reaction that we received from the village and from Central Hudson. The village looked good with regards to the roads being plowed, and Central Hudson was up here the next day to assist us with removing trees and to get us back online. Unfortunately, it wasn't until Saturday, but we were the least hit in terms of all the other municipalities in the area. Again, my thanks to Central Hudson and to Jim Simmons and his crew with regards to that storm, and our apologies to everybody who had to make alternate plans for Thanksgiving. We do know there were few people in the village that had to make alternate plans, so we apologize about that. Moving on to resolutions. This is a resolution that was actually on last month, and while we discussed it, we did not adopt it. And that is authorizing the mayor to sign the contract between the Village of Tivoli and the Town of Red Hook regarding funding for the Tivoli Fire Department. And this is a contract that was worked on and discussed with trustees Bruno and Israedi. Do either of you want to comment on the existing contract? I think it's pretty straightforward.
That's right.
The contract between the Town of Red Hook and the village with regards to fire?
Oh, yeah. Robin and I met with Bill O'Neal and Jim Ross about two months ago. We talked about the issue of not only the amount of support that Red Hook would give to the village and how it was anticipated to go up, I believe about 1.56%, which is Red Hook's cap on expenditures under the state tax cap. But we also talked about the relative ratio of sharing of costs for the fire department. In the LoSAP program, we share costs between Red Hook on a 60/40 basis. And although it isn't in the fire agreement as it is written, there's a basic understanding that Red Hook provides about 60% of the cost, and that Tivoli provides about 40%. Because of budgetary issues and the mayor's decision to freeze spending in February, a couple of years in a row, the fire department has not spent the full complement of their budget. And the result is an imbalance between what Red Hook has supplied and what Tivoli has supplied. Robin and I worked to assure the people from Red Hook that Tivoli would make every effort to complete their share of that expenditure. The other option for Red Hook to maintain that balance is for them to reduce their support, and that, of course, is not useful to Tivoli.
That being said, is there a motion to authorize me to sign the contract between the two parties?
So moved.
Motion's been made by trustee Israedi. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a resolution to adoption of the interim emergency successor legislation. This follows a public hearing that we had last month. Very quickly, I think I stated this, but in the event of emergency, if the mayor and/or deputy mayor are not here to address the emergency situation, this would allow one of the trustees to act in our stead until the mayor and/or deputy mayor could enter into the village. As my intention, once this is adopted, to send a memo to the clerk tomorrow pointing trustee Bruno. That being said, is there a motion to adopt resolution number?
Nineteen.
Nineteen?
Nineteen.
Of 2014.
So moved.
Motion's been made by the deputy mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Is there any discussion?
So that will, you know, looking forward to some day when we don't have the fabulous service of trustee Bruno. There'll be another appointment, and this is a standing thing where... And it'll always be one of the trustees who's not the mayor or the deputy.
Exactly. Right. Any further discussion? Seeing none, a roll call vote. Deputy Mayor Griffith?
Aye.
Trustee Bruno?
Aye.
Trustee Israedi?
Aye.
Trustee Schneider?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the appointing of election expecters for 2015. Thank you. Appoint election expecters? There it is. Thank you. And this is resolution 20 of 2014. And this is something that you have to do in the Villages Tivoli. You have to appoint Margaret Lemon, and you have to appoint Julie Scott after an election inspectors. That being said, I've entertained a motion to approve resolution 20 of the appointments of Ms. Lemon and Ms. Scott. Motion's been made by trustee Schneider. Is there a second?
Second.
And publicly accepted by Peter Monet. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, again, is another housekeeping item, and this is a resolution that we have with regards to Masonic Lodge. As you know, Villages Tivoli is very fortunate to have several municipal lots, parking lots here in Villages Tivoli. The lot over at the Mason's Hall is one of those, and this is a resolution that we have to do annually. I signed it. It's a contract that we have with the Masons so that we can allow municipal parking over at the Mason's Lot. At this point, entertain a motion to approve resolution 21 of 2014. Motion's been made by the deputy mayor, and seconded by trustee Bruno. Is there any discussion?
And this is not just for parking cars, but also for parking snow, correct?
Yes. It's the lot, and then after the lot, we need to plow all that snow into the grassy field over there. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The last item under regular business is approval of the 2015 holiday schedule. It is basic. It is New Year's Day, Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday, President's Day, Memorial Day, Independence Day, Labor Day, Columbus Day, Veterans Day, Thanksgiving, the day after Thanksgiving, and Christmas. At this point, entertain a motion to approve the holiday schedule for the village for 2015.
So moved.
Motion's been made by trustee Bruno and seconded by the deputy mayor. Is there any discussion? And we will make sure that we post any time that we close early or open late because of inclement weather or any other issue. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Last item that I wanted to discuss is the Four Corners intersection. As you drive into the village, you'll see that that intersection has been completely revamped. That was done by Errol Construction. I think it's everybody's agreement that that intersection looks great. And that was mostly paid for with CHICS funding, which is community highway improvement programs. And the grand total of that project was somewhere in the neighborhood of $86,000 for that intersection. They were done in about two and a half days, and it looks really good. So my thanks to Errol Construction, and my thanks to Morris Associates for their work on that. And also thanks to our DPW for assisting with the flagging and everything that needed to be done to get that project up and running. The bricks had sunk down after they had replaced them a few years ago, and it was really becoming, not only an eyesore, but it was becoming a damaging factor with regards to cars coming in and scraping the bottom. And that's the central part of the lot, so we wanted to make sure that that looked good. The next board... And I apologize if I'm rushing. I want to make sure we give Tim enough time. Our next board meeting will be January 21st of 2015 at 7:00. There'll be a workshop prior in the mayor's office at 6:00, and a regular workshop at 6 o'clock, also in the mayor's office. That being said, I return the floor over to committee reports to deputy Mayor Griffith.
Thank you. Town of Red Hook, which of course includes this village, is having an e-waste collection day on January 17th from 10 to 1:00. That will be at the Red Hook Recycling Center there behind the town offices on Friar House Lane. January 17th, 10 to 1:00, e-waste. Clerk Gennella, I can give you this list so you don't try and write everything I'm about to rattle off. Acceptable electronic equipment for recycling include computers, laptops, monitors, televisions, conventional and flat panel, networking devices such as servers, routers, switches, hubs, arrays, printers, fax machines, scanners, copiers, cell phones, telephones, answering machines, batteries, that kind of stuff. This list will be available, I believe, on the town website. There are some things that are not acceptable. Those include hazardous waste, being paint, oil, medication, et cetera, and home appliances, including washers, dryers, dishwashers, refrigerators, air conditioners, dehumidifiers. I know I have quite a large box collected in my garage, and I'm looking forward to taking that stuff only as far as Red Hook, so... Also, the Tivoli Community Garden. We are taking registrants right now. It's $30 for the season 2015. Gets you an 8-by-12 plot. And if you're interested, please contact tivoli community garden at gmail dot com. We have registered, I think, about four, which leaves us 16 plots, so they are starting to go. And I had a great time at Winterfest. I just want to thank trustee Bruno again. That was really great. And are we good with the memorial tree program? Can I talk about that?
Sure.
Yeah? So I just in the workshop talked to this board about a memorial tree program. Our Green Committee has been interested in trying to get some tree planting going in this village. Of course, resources are always the hard thing. We had a generous visit from Councilwoman Brenda Cagle at our Green Committee yesterday to talk to our committee about how the Town of Red Hook and the Village of Red Hook have gotten their trees going. They are a USA Tree City. They have an Arbor Day celebration, and there are many grants for municipalities who want to get more trees planted. And in the absence of a grant right now, one of the things that both the town and the village do, and I would like to try here in Tivoli, is a memorial tree program. So how that works is an individual can approach the village and, for a wholesale price, purchase a tree. Then there's an additional donation to what will become a tree fund for the village of $100. And then you can also put a little plaque memorializing a loved one. Often, they're deceased, or they may, you know, "Congratulations, you graduated," or something like that. Red Hook has had great success with this, and then these trees could be placed in some of our public spaces, and it's a great way to remember a loved one. So basically, it would come to about $200 a wholesale. For some of these trees, it's around $80. And we could go in with the Town of Red Hook and Bard College. They order trees usually twice a year together from a nursery on Buffalo, and they get a very good price. So if you're interested, please contact me. You know, we just sort of talked about this an hour ago. But it'd be a wonderful thing to get going. So that'll be the memorial tree program, and I'll be talking more about that in the coming months. Water report for the month of November 2014. We always have, every month, two microbiological samples taken from various random points in the water district, looking for bad things we don't want in there. And once again, we do not have either the violations, which should get us very concerned. Always good news. Those samples were taken this month, one from North Road and one from Spring Street. And during the month of November, we didn't have any water main breaks, but as many of you know, there was a tremendous one on December 1st, which will be in next month's report. I don't know if we want to talk about that.
It was significant enough that the majority of the village was without water for a period of time. And it is unfortunately the third break that we've had in that particular spot here on Broadway heading out to the village. It's on your left-hand side, right by the water well. Right by the well there, the wellhouse there. But it's the third one that we've had, I think.
Been here, basically.
Yeah. But we have a grant that is under review from Dutchess County Department of Planning to replace that entire line there from 9G going west up into the bridge. Our hope is that that grant will be approved so that we can replace that line. And that's the third one, and that was a significant one. Significant enough that we had tankers standing by in the event that there was a major fire. I was in contact with the fire chief, that we had tankers standing by in case we needed water. But it is a significant issue that we have here in the village with regards to those breaks. So I let the Deputy Commissioner of Public Works know immediately, you know, how important replacing this line is. We're very hopeful that that line will be funded. But in the meantime, our DPW was there that night to fix it. Took a couple hours, but it's fixed, and we believe that we're okay now. But when that tank drains, it takes about three days to get it back up completely. And that tank can drain in about an hour and a half, believe it or not, so...
And our...
In addition to that, we've paid off the well, right?
Yes.
We made our last payment on the Woodmark well.
Yep.
Out of the water system, so hopefully we can begin to reserve some money so that even if we don't win a grant...
Right. We don't want to just lie on a grant.
We can actually begin to work on this infrastructure.
We want to thank the Town of Red Hook and... Specifically supervisors to Crane for their assistance during the offer of the assistance during the water main break, but...
And as always, we're very grateful to the gentlemen of our DPW department. If you see them, give them away, give them the smile, you know, in the middle of the night in 10 degrees. They're 15 feet in the ground, up to their knees in water, and it's really great that we have people that will do that. And of course, our newest DPW employee, Ralph Torsha, welcome to Tivoli.
Waterway breaking a snowstorm.
He was right down there, so thanks. That's what I have.
Thank you. Trustee Bruno?
Okay. Well, I guess my biggest one for me would be that we had our Winterfest this past Saturday. I'd like to thank our sponsors, who were Morris Associates, Hotel Tivoli, Dutchess County Sheriff's Office, Trog Haven, Williams Lumber, Costco, Keel Equipment, Hannaford, and Stock and Shop. Also, additional assistance was received from Mayor Cranna, Clerk Linda Gennella, Deputy Clerk Glenn Roth, definitely our DPW, Tivoli Free Library, Fire Department, Mark Hildenbrandt, Tom Chrissy, Gal, and Ralph Torsha. A special guest that we had, besides Santa. But we had Mr. Andy Van Ness, who brought along the Linden Avenue Middle School saxophone quartet. It's very, very nice to have them. Mary Ansbach did some face painting for us. Alex Gennella, Ian Anderson, and David, Kira, and Sophie, who were my family. And definitely Tom Hanson with the horse and wagon rides. Santa rode through the village on the old fire truck, giving out candy canes, and then he took everyone's list in the gazebo. We were able to give out coloring books and more candy canes. Some people were happy with the event, and at the end of it, there were a few folks that did come up and say that they were quite disappointed. So with that in mind, I was so very thankful that people were able to come up and give their ideas and suggestions. I would encourage anyone to definitely, along with suggestions and ideas, is next year, please bring your enthusiasm. Bring your momentum. Bring your hands and many, many other people's hands to help. We are always requesting volunteers or suggestions and ideas and ways to bring more bits and pieces to the event. So bring whoever and whatever you can for next year. I can certainly be contacted through the clerk's office. And it's a big event, and there's a lot of time that's put into it. And if other people can jump in and bring friends and family like I've brought to it, if there was less time that I had to be out, my family might be kind of happier. So... But with keeping events in mind, and not to mention our park, Friday, February 20th, there'll be a sub night at the Friar House. Hot subs, probably sausages and peppers, meatball, five bucks. Proceeds will go to the rec department and see if we can't spruce up some more areas of the park in the spring. But definitely, with some other areas of the village, our civic organizations and Masons and Legion, keep an eye out for their dinners, breakfasts, definitely the library. And I did hear that their swap on Saturday went quite well. And I think I'll go out to it.
Thank you. Trustee Israedi?
Well, I'd like to talk a little bit about the LoSAP program. We've had some legislation in the past few weeks indicating that we have a lump sum distribution on our LoSAP program, which gives rise when you take your 20 years of savings and distribute them immediately. It has an adverse tax effect because it boosts your income in here in which you receive it. There has been some move to try to allow more frequent distributions. Our issue in the village is that this legislation, as it's written, which is a lump sum distribution, was passed by referendum. It has been extraordinarily effective. We have now over $100,000 in the LoSAP fund for our 2021 active fire persons, so they're actually generating some real money. And our concern is that if we attempted a change in the legislation, we'd have to go back to referendum, and in that process could possibly be justice. So we'll be talking to the fire directors, but I suspect that we're not going to change the program because of that tax issue. In addition to that, I mentioned the fire agreement. One of the things that when Robin and I were looking at the fire agreement, we realized there's $1,000 a year that the fire department can receive from the Town of Red Hook for recruitment expenses. Well, it turns out that the fire department does spend that much a year on recruitment expenses. And they are now sending us the invoices for that, so they're getting a little extra money in that way. Any of you who receive in the mail, and I do on about a quarterly basis, a letter from the fire department asking for contributions, you'll notice that it also asks if you are able to serve the fire department. That is the recruitment letter, and that is what we're nearly able to pay for. Finally, planning and zoning. We've had a sort of regular planning meetings. We've got a lot of potential development going on in the village. Everything from a new house to some new businesses on Main Street. Everything from a new house to some new businesses on Main Street. Mike Belecki is the chair of that board and has been doing a great job for us. And he has reported very clearly that he has been well supported by our zoning enforcement officer in doing his job. He gets good reports on what the law is that he has to pay attention to with each application and how he should use that law to influence the decisions that are made. We also had a ZBA meeting to discuss a request for an area variance for a gentleman who's building a house on Clay Hill Road. Again, the zoning enforcement officer gave the group a clear idea of what the code was that they were to consider in making the decision about whether they would give that area variance or not. Last Wednesday, when I was last at the last meeting, which I was unable to attend, I understand you had a discussion about our services with the zoning enforcement officer. And I did create a report as a consequence of that, which I submitted to the mayor and the board. What I would report to all of you at this meeting is that the zoning enforcement officer, even though it sounds like he's enforcement, he is also the issuer of building permits. He does title searches and he does fire inspections. He has done 27, issued 27 building permits and closed out 29 since the beginning of the year. He has done 10 fire inspections. And he has done 25 title searches for which the village receives funds as well. He is, both the people in that office are licensed building inspectors. So they are qualified under New York State to do that job. We have gotten, I have gotten notification from many of the construction contractors who work in the village that that office is very helpful to them. They are available seven hours a day, five days a week to anybody to go to them. I know that there was a lot of concern about whether that zoning enforcement officer is doing a good job of actually enforcing the code. The village of Tivoli sometimes has an untidy look, especially because we have 25% of our building, of our residential stock are rental apartments. And at times of changeover from one renter to another, there have been known to be couches or mattresses or anything out in the yard. And there have been some egregious failure by property owners to clean up debris at the back. I personally, I noticed, I've noted that he has dealt with 20 such complaints and he has resolved 16 without having to do more than inform the landowner. He has a couple that are pending court action and a couple where he has given the landowner more time to conclude the event. I will try to continue communicating any issues that you have to the code enforcement officer. I hope that the rest of the board will do that as well. My concern is that when you have a contract that is working for 80% of what it is you're needing them for, that we not be too eager to throw it out for that portion of it that is perceived to be not working.
We had this discussion in the workshop and the violations that Trustee Isra points out in her memo, the majority of the violations that were addressed by the zoning enforcement officer are violations that I brought to the zoning enforcement's attention and/or residents have brought to the zoning enforcement's attention. And I also stated in the workshop that we had a while ago that it's my opinion that if we're paying 100% of our bill, that the village should get 100% service and not 80% service. And our fee from the Town of Red Hook has gone from $12,500 to $15,000. And so while, yes, inspections are taking place and the other, and the title searches are being done, it is still my opinion, and I think I share the opinion of residents, not all residents, but many residents, that there are still other areas that need to be addressed and we will continue to look at this. But it is still my intention, as I said in the workshop, to propose legislation to this board to authorize me to discontinue the contract with the Town of Red Hook with regards to zoning enforcement. Trustee Schneider.
Okay, well, I guess I will start with the Justice Court report, which should be pretty straightforward. For the month of November, there were 21 charges, 11 of which were deposed. A total of $806 was collected and remitted to the state comptroller's office. Moving on to the Tivoli Business and Artists Alliance. Sadly, I have to report that our last meeting, which was scheduled for Monday, the 15th, was canceled at my own need there. I wasn't able to attend. I do have intentions of rescheduling that for January, but I am working to confirm the date of the toy merchants meeting so that there's not any... Thank you, conflict, I'm telling you, I'm having that day. So there's no conflict in that meeting. So I'm looking forward to continuing the conversations that have been started with the business owners here and seeing the various ways that the village can support them and their many successes. I do want to take a minute to thank Trustee Bruno for all of her hard work for Winter Fest. One of the things that she didn't really talk about was the fact that she also coordinated a craft fair, which she's done for several consecutive years. I was actually a vendor there. My husband and I own a coffee shop and so we brought a lot of our little goodies over to offer at the craft fair. And I have to say, Robin, that I noticed a lot more participation, a lot more folks coming through to check out the vendors than we have seen in past years. So obviously, your work there is paying off. I appreciate the effort there. And I know that my boys had a really great time, you know. It's one of those really amazing aspects of living in a small village, you know. Here I am sitting at the table with my wares and I know that my boys are okay, even though they're running around in the parking lot there a little bit. And I have friends and neighbors who are helping me keep an eye on them. Not something that you could necessarily say anywhere. So for the village of Tivoli, I think that's one of those values that I'm really thankful for living here. I also wanted to touch on our Greenway Grant project. Robin, I know you didn't really talk about that, but I think that we should. We met with Liz Axelson and Tom Harvey from Morris Associates. And we were actually able to do a walkthrough, if you will. Now, I don't know if any of you remember what the Greenway Grant entails. It's actually a grant for planning of sidewalks and lighting, ADA accessible sidewalks, down to the waterfront property. So it's something that has been, I want to say stagnating a little bit. You know, the grant was obtained a couple of years ago and there really wasn't a ton of activity on it. So Robin and I have spearheaded the effort to move that project along. We did a walkthrough from the center of the village, right here at Village Hall, all the way down to the waterfront property and had very in-depth conversation with the engineers about, you know, where should the sidewalk be? Which side should it be on? Where does the grade present a problem? What about drainage? You know, we checked out all the culverts, we looked at clearance. Will we be able to put in the appropriate size sidewalk here to make this accessible? So there were a lot of very basic components that needed to be identified before we could even really begin digging into the meat of this project. So I'm very confident that we were able to identify many of those key pieces of information that we need to really get into the planning aspect of this project. And I'm tremendously excited to see where it goes. One of the things that I really love about working with those engineers is that challenges are opportunities to them. You know, we actually had them giddy and excited about, woo, what are we going to do here? Which is, that's an amazing aspect. Again, same words, amazing aspect. Because with our particular infrastructure, with our particular location, there are a lot of challenges that will need to be overcome in order to see the realization of that project. But I am confident that we will be able to come up with a solution that enhances our waterfront. Is there anything that you want to add to?
Just, I think, as we were taking our stroll down that big hill, there were some, a couple like sort of hidden treasures as we were making our way down. And even with historical conversation with all the engineers, it was on...
Psy opening, yeah, it was, it was. I will say that Robin and I are still looking for participation. If anyone is interested in weighing in on this project, please come and talk to us. We have a matching grant, which means that it's a $30,000 budget, but we need to match $15,000 through time donated by trustees, village residents, anybody who has some input there. So I know that I've spoken to at least one other individual. I've also had conversations with our village historian as to ways to identify historical importance sites, ways to incorporate the historical aesthetics into this project. And so we do have...
And you have $15 an hour, which is the allowable cost. You need about 1,000 hours.
I will say, yes, but there is a rubric that we were actually able to obtain from Market Greenway. And that allows us to calculate different values based on the person who's volunteering, absolutely. So it's not just a straight up $15 an hour kind of fee there. So don't let that be a deterrent, please.
Thank you very much.
Mark Pristiglio from Greenway has been a tremendous help.
Amazing, apparently amazing is my word tonight, guys, I'm sorry. So he's been amazingly supportive in, you know, the questions that Robin and I have had and making himself available to answer those questions and supporting us in making any of the changes. I know that we had talked previously about a revision that we had made to the original scope of the work, which I think is beneficial to the overall project at this point, so.
Didn't I get an amazing, because I don't remember.
Robin, you're amazing, you're an amazing job. Before I bring Tim up, I'm going to let the, those of you that are gathered address the board on any item that you wish. And I ask you to keep your comments to three minutes because I do want to get Mr. Weedman in to give his comments with regards to where we are on the study. So I want to throw it all over to you. But again, please keep your comments to three minutes so we have enough time to fit everything in. Peter Monet, before you jump out of your chair.
Quite honestly, regarding the zoning enforcement issue, a lot of us are really quite upset at the way you've chosen to go about dealing with the process. I spoke to a lot of people in the past couple of weeks. Could have spoken to a lot more, been busy, had bad weather. But that regardless, honestly speaking, I did not find one single person, well, no, that's true, not true. I did speak to one person who was in favor of getting rid of Red Hook, one. I spoke to a lot of people about this. This is not popular for a variety of reasons. I understand that you're long on outrage over the perceived shortcomings. But again, considering, as Susan has pointed out, the amount that we do get, yes, there are shortcomings. We don't get 100% out of everything, you know. Don't throw it out. We went from having a good situation to having a less good situation. My feeling is that by going somewhere more expensive to a private party, we're never going to get the same level of service, the same level of contact that we do now. We certainly don't have it from what we had before. And we're not going to get it by going to a private party. I just don't believe that. And to do, one thing that nobody seems to be bringing up is how are we going to pay the extra costs for a private concern to come in and do this? I've heard rumors of the possibility of dramatically increasing the fire inspection fees on business and blowouts. Is that true?
We haven't had any discussion on any of those.
That's not been brought up.
We've talked about addressing various zoning goals, not just one specific one.
So you expect that out of the one person you've spoken to so far, that for the conveniently quoted price of $15,000 a year, you're going to get the exact same level or more of service?
We are actively looking at various proposals.
Okay, but so far you've only looked at one and that was the one that you tried to vote on last month, correct?
No.
You didn't?
No.
Okay. In any case, I just want to put out there that I understand that there are shortcomings with Red Hook. There are shortcomings with every system. Don't just go and throw it out because you're angry about a small percentage of what they do. Again, I will point out that of all the people I spoke to, I found one resident. I didn't, I found a bunch of residents who thought, oh, yeah, okay, there are some shortcomings. There are some shabby areas. I did not find one single resident that was in favor of ditching Red Hook. Sorry, again, I'll revise that. I did find one, who is one that would be expected. You know, you want to talk about shabby, I see shabby all over the place. I'm shocked, in fact, at the fact that you're putting out the number of $1,000, I mean, $100,000 being spent on the park. I noticed two things that have been improved from that $100,000. The thing that distresses me is throughout the summer, most of the times that I went to use the bathrooms, we couldn't even use the bathrooms. So it seems to me that what you're really trying to do on some level, whether intentional or not, is to deflect a lot of the responsibility that lands on your shoulders onto two employees who don't have enough hours in the week to get their jobs done of the Town of Red Hook that we have a contract with. You're trying to deflect a lot of shortcomings on other levels onto them. I think they're not going to come in and make this a pristine place. They're not going to come in, even if we double our contracts, they're not going to turn this into a run back. And quite honestly, a lot of us don't want to live in that level of a police state where you have somebody driving around looking for every minute violation that they can find in order to line the coffers of the village and have everybody be in full compliance. It's upsetting.
Thank you, Peter. Any other comments?
I'd like to say one. Everybody in the Tivoli Artists and Business Association signed the petition. People do not want the switching out of Steve Cole and Bob. We're very happy with what they do. And so I know that from the business owner's perspective, nobody wants it. We're happy with what's there, it works. It's just better communication has to happen.
Thank you, George. Any other comments? Yes?
Yes. I'm a landowner and business owner here in Tivoli. And I've had a number of experiences with Stephen Cole. I put up a fence. I design and build, but I don't know why I didn't even think about zoning when I put up this fence. I totally did it wrong. I was amazed at how fast I had a violation for putting my fence up. But he's always been great. I call him, he calls me right back. You know, I asked him, what was I supposed to do? And he tells me what I was actually supposed to do. And I tell him I put it up and he's like there the next day, like signing it off. So anyway, my experience has been really good from a personal experience. I'm curious if all of the zoning, the code violations that you brought to him, are things that, are they all things that would be really easy for him to spot coming through? Or are some, like are some things time-based that a violation happened at a certain time and maybe he wouldn't see it? Or it's all real clear cut? They're just like...
The majority of the violations that were referenced in Trustee Isra's memo to the board are violations that anyone would be able to see. Whether it's an oil tank in the yard, whether it was garbage behind property, whether it was a falling down garage, garbage filling out.
Most of those were like longstanding or they were like, they just happened all of a sudden or?
They're various things. There was a match, I mean, I'm not going to get into it because it's not my turn to talk. But I mean, they're a mixture of things.
Is Susan allowed to elaborate on what those violations were? Be more specific?
Well, maybe that could just be made, is that public?
Sure, any communication that goes between...
I can put my memo in.
I'm just curious.
But we can get it out because I do want to save time for Mr. Weedman because we're really running late. But we can get you a copy if you want, Trustee Isra.
Yeah, I was curious, since I know so little about zoning, it seems to be a huge and intense topic for everyone. I see a lot of tension around it, curious about it. But what do you guys think in general? Like, is the village improving? Is it becoming more shabby or less shabby? Or like...
I think that's a conversation that we need to hear from more residents.
Oh, okay. Because I came here eight years ago as a visitor. I actually rented the barn that we now own and rent. It was a vacation rental then, we bought it as such. And... And I think Tibbely is awesome. Like, I moved here because I remembered it being great. I came back and I thought it was, like, even better than I remembered. There's, like, so many benefits here. We're, we're, like, so happy to share our property with people because we think this place is amazing. And, and I'm very much in favor of, I guess, less shabbiness? Or, or just the place being, you know, as great as it can be? So I'm really interested in the conversation, but I think Tibbely is pretty great. I don't think we should call it shabby, we should come up with a better word.
That's good to hear.
Or shabby chic.
Recently described in the About Town in an article as funky and freewheeling.
That's a good one.
I want to, any other, any other, I'm sorry, any other comments? If there are no further comments, I want to thank you.
I had one more comment.
Go ahead, one more comment.
This is about the recycling thing. E-waste.
That you waste it?
If you, if you have an old refrigerator sitting around that you want to get rid of, Central Hudson will give you 50 bucks and take it away for you. And you can give them up to two old air conditioners that they will also recycle at the same time. I just wanted to add that.
Thank you.
One other thing, just starting out with the e-waste. I texted Laura Gell furiously when that was brought up, because I was very excited. And then she responded, so what? If you have a recycling tag with the village, I mean, with the town of Red Hook, you can get rid of that stuff pretty much any day, anyway. So if you don't have a recycling tag, you can do this. The other very, very important thing is Santa.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't add that. This is, you don't need the annual tag to participate in this state.
Santa, when he's going around on the fire engine, I really strenuously object to that. Yet again, he woke my two-year-old up from bed. And next year I have lawyers coming.
I want to see, you look very, you look like an attorney right here, and I did, you know? Thank you, Peter.
But the candy cane didn't fix it?
The fact that you.
My sugar gets a little low sometimes, so yes. Oh, wait, that was for the kids?
Now I know what he's crying.
At this point, I want to turn it over to Tim, who's been sitting very patiently through what I thought was going to be a quick meeting, but, Tim, thank you for, thank you for your comments, and everybody, as always, I do, whether we agree or disagree, I do appreciate that, and that's what makes Tibbely Tibbely. So, Tim, before you.
Thank you, Mayor Grant. And I'll do a brief intro. Tim Weidman, I live over in Kingston. My business is Rondout Consulting. I am working with another consultant who's in New Paltz, very far away, Peter Fairweather. And as the mayor alluded to, we've been hired by the town under a grant from Dutchess County Planning to do a shared services highway study. And so I'm here to kind of provide an update on where that study is, about nine months, not quite a year, but about nine months into it. And I think the conversation that unfolded just now about building, inspection and zoning is a good kind of summary of the kinds of things that happen when we talk about shared services and consolidation of municipalities. And I think it underscores why we're going through this process around highway services as well. You know, municipal boards everywhere across the state are under a lot of pressure, as you all know, better than I do, pressure to reduce costs, to keep taxes down, and then to meet the needs of a community, the important service needs, municipal service needs of a community. And if that weren't enough, you're asked to do it in, in an environment where there's more and more emergencies that need to be dealt with, that there's older infrastructure that's more costly to repair and maintain. And all of these things amount to really what I'm sure for some of you and for a lot of municipalities around the state keeps people up at night. And so we're here to start to unravel some of that and talk about the highway services that are provided in the three municipalities, the town of Red Hook, the village of Red Hook, and the village of Tibbely. And as part of that, what we're, what we're looking to do is to not just achieve some sort of cost savings, this isn't just a cost reduction study, it's a balancing of how do we come up with some ways to reduce costs, to relieve the tax burden on residents, but also maintain or improve the quality of important streets and highway services that are provided in the three municipalities. And, you know, to the point that you made earlier, this is not a one-time thing. Peter and I are engaged for about a year-long process, but we hope that at the conclusion of that process and even during the process, that we help spark a conversation about these services, what's important to each community? You know, what's the balance between the services that we receive and the cost and how we need to reduce that cost in order to be able to afford the livelihood that we want in our, in our community? So it's about a conversation around reducing costs, improving services, challenging stuff, but something that we have a lot of experience working with communities with. And, you know, nine months in, are really eager to start having further conversations with the boards and with the public about our findings so far. So today, I'm just going to quickly summarize the stuff we've established so far, which is mostly a review for you all, but it's important for me to kind of get up here and refresh your memory and make sure that you understand how we see this stuff. And then to talk a little bit about six main options, and then a couple other options that we've identified that we're looking at in this study. And so I'll first mention that we have a website for the project. It's redhook.rondoutconsulting.com. You can also get to it from a link that's on the homepage for the village of Tibbely. There's also a link on the village of Red Hook and town of Red Hook's websites. So you can get there. It has a whole bunch of information about the study, including a lot of past documents that we've produced for the study committee, which involves representatives from all three municipalities, and we meet monthly to progress with this process. And so we produced first a report that looked at the current department structures and services that are provided. So what is, the study was called the Highway Services Study before we got involved, and I think that term itself is a little problematic, that highway is means something in town lingo and in county lingo and in state lingo. There really aren't highways, in my sense of the word, in the village of Tibbely or in the village of Red Hook even for that matter. And so I think, you know, we're unpacking what that term highway services means. And as we do that, we discovered pretty quickly something that is familiar to us from other communities, that the services related to streets and road maintenance in a small village like Tibbely and in a small village like Red Hook are wrapped up in a whole bunch of other services, garbage collection, sewer and water, parks maintenance, buildings and grounds maintenance, all sorts of stuff that gets wrapped up into what here in Tibbely is called a DPW. And so that's kind of a quick overview of the findings from that initial, that initial report that we provided to the committee, looking at the various structures and services that are provided in each of the three municipalities. From there, we had some public conversations. We've actually had two public meetings already. We've held one at the town of Red Hook Town Hall, and then one at the village of Red Hook Village Hall, and then we'll be having one shortly in January here at Tibbely. So in those first two meetings, we gathered some input from residents who came out to share their concerns, their hopes, what they're worried about when we talk about highway shared services or restructuring, what they think their departments do really well, what they think their departments are challenged with. And all of that provided us as consultants with some context, some kind of local flavor, what's the situation here in Tibbely and in Red Hook that we need to be aware of as we start to think about options for shared services in the area of highway. So those two reports are up on the website. They've been there for a little while. You can take a look at those if you're interested in the history of this project over the last few months. Most recently, we've been working on a report that identifies the options that we as consultants in conversations with the committee have identified as potentially promising. What are some ways that the three municipalities could share services, could restructure their services in order to save money and improve the quality of services? And so out of that, we've identified six primary options, and then a set of options that are really not highway, but we think there's potential there. Our work is really limited to highway, so we can't dive into those deeply, but we really encourage the three municipalities to think more about those as well. So the six that we've identified that we're moving ahead to study further, one is to standardize municipal policies and procedures across the three municipalities when it comes to roads, streets and highway maintenance. Right now, you'd be surprised at how differently, even just the language of talking about streets maintenance and road maintenance and highway maintenance is across the three municipalities. There's different accounting codes, there's different styles of tracking time and attendance for the employees that work on this stuff, different levels of data about how equipment is used and how facilities are used. So all of that creates a barrier to conversations about shared services, and we think that that's a first important option that the three municipalities should tackle together. Look at how we can create some common language, standardize some policies and procedures across the three departments, get everybody kind of on an equal playing field when it comes to talking about these services so that then there's more options for shared services in the future. That's one. It's not, it's not terribly sexy, it's not a very grandiose option, but we really think it's an important one for a municipality like Tibbely, like the village of Red Hook and town of Red Hook to consider and move forward with. Going kind of along with that, we think there's an opportunity in these three municipalities to look into shared administration for highway, roads, street maintenance. Administration is something that every small municipality struggles with because there's not a lot of extra administrators, there's not, you know, layers of bureaucracy here to help manage the complicated and sometimes, you know, very critical services that are provided. And, you know, quite frankly, my outsider's perspective is that all three municipalities, mostly the two villages, over the course of years and years of trying to tighten the fiscal bell, have lost some administrative capacity that's really important. It's really hard to keep track of long-term capital costs and to plan appropriately for them when you don't have people whose job it is to do that. And so we see a second option, an important option, is to work together, the three municipalities, to leverage some of the existing administrative capacity of the town to help the two villages plan better, track data better, use that data to inform the work that they do on a day-to-day basis and over the long run. So that's option two, is some shared administrative services. The third option is to, with the standardized policies and that shared administration, implement shared training. Training is a huge area of expense right now, but it's an important area for any department in any municipality. You got to have staff that, you know, first of all, know exactly what they're doing, are up to date. You know, I think the staff in the three villages are really dedicated, they work really, really hard, but the landscape of highway services is changing constantly and at a more and more rapid pace. There's more regulations to pay attention to, when you have to rotate signs out and all sorts of stuff that really is hard to keep track of. So shared training can help to maintain that level of capability that's now in place in the three municipalities. And then fourth, we think there's an opportunity for shared capital planning and purchasing. Get the other pieces in place, and what happens is suddenly the three municipalities are able to have the administrative capacity to start thinking long-term about big purchases that are inevitable when you talk about highway, streets and roads. And even as you think about not just those services, but the related services of sewer and water, of parks maintenance, of buildings and grounds maintenance, of garbage collection. These are capital-intensive services that it's easy for a short period of time to delay buying a new truck or to avoid fixing that water main, but eventually those things catch up with you and you're in a worse place than you were before. And so our suggestion with shared capital planning and purchasing is each municipality, through that administrative capacity that they get by sharing, can start to put together a long-range capital plan. When each municipality has a long-range capital plan, the three municipalities can sit together, look at those plans together and say, where are the areas of overlap? Where is that one piece of equipment that we're all talking about buying instead of all of us buying it? Maybe two of us buy one and we share the three municipalities those two pieces of equipment. So those are, those are four primary options that we really think are things that the municipalities could move forward with pretty quickly when the study is completed. They're relatively easy to accomplish. We've done a feasibility assessment that looks at, are they legal? I mean, is there any barrier to them in New York state law? Does there seem to be public and political will from the part of the municipal boards and the representatives on our committee? And then operationally, talking with the staff in each department are the things that people could actually do relatively easily. We think that it's a thumbs up on all those things for those first four options. The next two options, the last of our six, are really restructuring options. These are ones that tend to scare people because it's where I start talking about things like consolidation or mergers. We think it's worth exploring these in this study, but we think that if they happen, they're further off. Those first four options, we think are the ones that the municipality should move forward with right away. We think there's some potential for some consolidation or merger conversations, but we recognize that that, that raises a whole new set of concerns. We don't want things to go away if they're going to go away and then we're going to lose them or we're going to lose control over them. All those things are really valid concerns. But at the same time, I think we have to confront the reality, which is that these are small municipalities and that with increasing complexities, increasing regulatory requirements, it's harder and harder to manage these departments within a single municipality. We have to be thinking about the opportunities of doing it across municipalities in a larger scale. So we're looking at two consolidation or merger restructuring options. One of them would preserve separate departments in each of the three municipalities to dedicate their efforts in the roads, streets and highways in those municipalities, but would coordinate so that they don't necessarily serve just their municipal boundaries. If a village, snowplow, is driving on a town road just outside of the village to get to another village road, it should plow that, and maybe the village should maintain that road and do it in a contract with the town. Vice versa as well, and then thinking of bringing in the county and the state into that kind of arrangement as well to see if there's some opportunities to, you know, basically provide services under a contract for the state or for the county. The final option, the sixth option, is a true consolidation of departments, looking at the village of Tibbely DPW, the village of Red Hook Highway Department, and the town highway department, and looking at ways to consolidate all those into a single department that provides services across all three municipalities through a contract. So again, those last two, we think there's some headaches involved with them. They're complicated, they're challenging, they pose a risk in terms of the softer things, maybe not the numbers, but the things like, important things like community character and preserving community character, local decision-making and control over these services. But we think that inevitably there are conversations that the municipal boards are going to need to have over the next few years, so we see the study as an opportunity to inform that discussion. The final thing, there were a couple other options that were identified in our early process, water and sewer. That's something that the village of Tibbely is already moving ahead to look at some options to study how we might work together with the Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority to see if there's an opportunity there. We recommend the same for the village of Red Hook and town of Red Hook with their water systems, to look at other options to share those services or to consolidate them in some way. Garbage collection, we know that there's a history here with the two villages and garbage collection. We think that there's, there's got to be continued discussions about whether or not it makes sense for the two villages to have a single garbage collection system. And that may be one of the municipalities providing that garbage collection system to the other, or it may be some sort of combined outsourcing and contracting. It's not really in the realm of our study, but we think it's a service that's important for the municipalities to look at still, even though there's a history of maybe it not working perfectly in the past. And finally, parks maintenance is another area of opportunity. All three municipalities are maintaining parks. That again involves a lot of equipment, it involves a specialized kind of pool of labor, temporary and seasonal labor in particular, and we think there's opportunities here for the three municipalities to share that, share the equipment, maybe develop a common pool of part-time employees that can work at all three municipalities. So that's what we've found so far. I think I'll really leave it at that. We're working now on trying to assess the impact of each of those options. There's kind of two main areas of impact. One is financial, that's the one that's maybe easiest to quantify and is usually pretty important to people. How would these things save money? If they would save money at all, how would they save money and how much? This is particularly important in light of the governor's tax freeze program and all the stuff that you may be hearing about. School districts are now under this, but in the future, villages, towns, counties, cities will all be subject to this, this tax freeze legislation that basically says that municipalities and their residents can receive tax credits from the state only if they meet certain conditions about not exceeding the property tax cap, but also on top of that, reducing their tax levy over time. And so the savings that come from each of these, as we're analyzing it, will be an important part of that conversation for the village of Tibbely. But it's not just about savings, it's about how do we look at what this does to the quality of services that are provided? And so for each of the options, trying to balance those, there may be some savings, but does it come at the cost of some loss of quality? Or on the other hand, maybe there's savings and this also gets us to a higher quality service. Yeah, that's it.
Tim, it is, Tim.
Yes, that's right.
Okay. Tibbely has been living such a shoestring for so long, and we have been so resource-constrained that one of the things that concerns me about the tax cap is that we would love to have a higher quality of some of these things, but we're not sure that we can do it at the same price that we've been doing it at.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, that's the reality. And that's, I think, I think that's, that's why we're here really, is to see if there's some opportunity to get that continued quality or even improve quality by working with the other two municipalities in the study in a way that avoids increasing the cost, or hopefully doesn't just avoid increasing, but helps to reduce the cost, at least that little bit that the tax cap and tax freeze program requires.
Any comments from the board? Does anybody have a question for Tim? Peter?
I have a couple of quick questions, which are maybe more philosophical or theoretical than anything else, but all this, of course, sounds fantastic, right? Especially the first four points, I, you know, you hear that, and, you know, how can you disagree? Right? But the fact is, we don't live in a world on paper, right? So we don't live in a world of ideals. Does your study take into account, in terms of its calculations, either for or against, the possibility that some of these things, when the rubber hits the road and things start to happen, personalities conflict, villages conflict? I mean, what if they end up not being quite so rosy as they are on paper? I mean, what recourse do we have?
Yeah. Well, that's a good question. I think there's two parts to that, in my opinion. One is, you know, that I think when we start to roll out our assessment of the impacts, what are the savings potentials from these? You know, we tie that to, what are the assumptions behind that? So is it driven by an assumption that you might save 10% on this by doing it? And, you know, I think it's a worthwhile conversation, one that we'll have with the committee, and we would encourage in our continuing public meetings on this, folks to question that. And then, you know, maybe it's not 10%, or maybe we provide some range and say, you know, we think it could be 10%, but maybe you'll only get to 5%, and what does that do to the savings?
Well, even just aside percentages, I'm just talking about interactions and, I mean...
Yeah.
Because when it comes down to it, you know, we're going to be dealing with individuals and humans, it's a very small system, right? So we're not going to be dealing with, you know, 5% or 7%. We're going to be dealing with person A, D, and person B, and how does that, and how does that, how does that work out?
Yeah.
I mean, it seems, I don't have the objections, again, in theory, to what you're saying. I just, I'm worried about that.
Yeah, I hear you. And I guess, you know, this is my overly analytical mindset that boils it all down to the numbers, but I completely get, and I think part of the reason that Peter and I, the other consultant and I, are involved in this process, in particular here in Redhook, is because, you know, in conversations with the committee that's formed to do this and other conversations here in this community, despite the challenges with garbage and the current challenges with zoning and building inspection, there's a good dialogue and a good relationship between the two villages and the town. And that's what it takes to make this stuff work. And we recognize that, and we think that's an important part of what will reflect in the findings from this, that you've got to maintain that first and foremost. If you don't have that good relationship, then you know what? All the savings are just, you know, behind the sky.
Can I interject for a moment? There's just one thing that I wanted to bring up. I know that at our last board meeting, the fact that we have some disagreements with the current zoning, you know, some issues there, and the fact that we've had a negative experience as far as coordinating a garbage collection. I know that I acknowledged that those topics have been touched upon in our committee meetings, and I think that it's important to clarify what I meant there. They have been acknowledged.
Oh, sure, sure. I was going to say that they have.
Right. But that, I mean, it begs the question, why would we even consider doing this if we know that in the past it hasn't worked? And I think that there's some value in acknowledging why it didn't work and learning from that to see if there is still an opportunity that exists to try to coordinate these types of services moving forward. I don't think that it should necessarily act as a hindrance to prevent us from even, you know, trying to work it out. That being said, there is also always the chance that it's not going to work out quite like we thought. And that's where that willingness to keep the communication open and try maybe different avenues of resolution prior to just scrapping the whole thing is very important.
Like with the zoning, of course.
Well, I think that, you know, it's a natural correlation that a lot of people are making right now. Okay, so what's the reaction here in regard to zoning, and how is that going to play out in regard to highway services?
But if I might, and this might be dangerous for me, but recognize that there are always alternatives, and that I think that, you know, part of our job too is to not paint any of the three municipalities into a corner that they couldn't get out of at some point if it really wasn't working. And, you know, and I think the conversation about zoning, you know, is a healthy one insofar as it identifies that, you know, the current situation is one option, there are other options, and any community should always make sure that they're in that place. The worst place to be in is, you know, we're under, we have no options here, and so we're kind of in a monopoly setting. Somebody can take advantage of that.
And the history here with zoning is that we actually had, again, a system that had some shortcomings, but we had a very, very workable and very positive system previous to our arrangement with Redhook. And I just worry about sort of a ratcheting downwards effect if we go and sort of ditch our agreement with Redhook. Now, I think we're not, I think fiscally it's difficult to go in a positive direction by, you know...
Yeah, well, that aside, you know, I think it's a healthy discussion to have, and so, you know, to that extent, I support it.
Hold on, Peter, I just want to see if anybody else has any questions for Tim. Go ahead, Peter.
Do you have, just to ask you, just play devil's advocate for a second. What are the arguments against shared services?
I mean, I think you've raised them in some sense. This is complicated stuff, and if you don't have a healthy relationship that can allow you to not immediately kind of discard it if it's not working, then it's probably not